All right, it is June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, seven oh one P M. Calling for order, the Wayne Township Board of Trustees. You ever signed in? Please sign in. Fireworks call please, Daryl.
Call roll, Ms. Colvin.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Patrick.
Here.
For President of County.
All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please, I need the approval for the meeting minutes from the previous meeting due to six?
A link, all right, sir.
So moved.
I second.
Yeah, you have to second, I was okay.
I can do that.
All those in favor, so if I say no.
Aye.
We made changes to the post agenda? All right, we will start off with Mr. Cameron, Road Department report.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm doing well, we did, we're about, we have, we're about halfway through with the second round. I'm only getting ready for the Independence Day holiday coming up. Things are looking good. Everything else is kind of steady as she goes. Got a phone call verifying that of the Corwin Road closure starting around the fifth for the re-alignment of the horse mane sewer and water and all that jazz. They're going to do an open cut across Corwin Road. They've already started grubbing, clearing there next to the bridge. So I'm sure that will be, the signs are out. You know, on both sides of it or whatever. If you get any phone calls, I'm sure. My phone, my phone hasn't run yet, but I anticipate it.
Do you know if the multi-purpose path is being closed? Are they cutting half way? Have you heard?
They'll, I have not heard, but I'm kind of, I'm fairly confident in assuming that they will be cutting by path as well.
Right, I think so, okay.
To get that over there, so. Other than that, that's all I have, I'll stand by them, we'll fork away through it. And unless you guys have anything you need to pass along to me. We're just kind of steady as she goes, I haven't gotten a pre-con meeting yet for chip seal. I'm hoping to hear something here pretty soon, but I didn't get a chance to call down at the engineer's office today, but that's on my list for tomorrow, so.
I was out at three eighty in Roxanne de Brunton Road and they are chip sealing out there. Not sure who it is.
Right.
On State Route three eighty, so it's stated, so I don't know if they're on a state.
I was out there also, it looks like a finer stone than we use.
Yeah, I think they're, they're putting down probably nines and then put the fog seal at the top of it. And you can see the overspray on the other lane and the striping it all in one pass.
As far as I, as far as I know, the contractor that got the bid for Warren County did not get, the other two counties that they were working in, Allen and Alden, was the other, the other counties that they had gotten, and they were coming to us as soon as they got done there. And we were going to be first to be done in Warren County. Since um, since we're under the, we're kind of under a time constraint and under the gun with the microseal coming behind it, so. We'll see. More to come.
Yeah, should be updates next week.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the fire department report, Chief Paul Shear.
Hello.
Hello.
I said we've got a few applicants went out this week. Got one back yesterday, so I'm working on that one. So the other one's come back, well, I have about four of those yet.
Okay, great, that's good news.
Uh, got to do applicants for sign contract and new business. Parts to repair the air leak, they're on backboard, they sent us three week lead time. And Seagrave, the salesman called me the other day, well, yesterday. He's going to go up to the factory, go send us pictures. He said the frame and the cab is laid down. They had questions about the striping, the black stripe that goes around it. And that's all I have about it, so. That's all I've got.
Good, let's go through some meetings.
I'll forward pictures, I won't give them.
All right. Thank you, any questions?
I don't, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, next is Ms. Stacy Lowing for our zoning department report.
Good evening, well, I have, I had two applications on the V Z A last week. Had one that was denied and for another accessory building and one that was approved or in addition. And tonight, there's a resolution on the agenda to reappoint one of the members. It's pretty new on the, on the V Z A because his, he was filling a term, only had a few months left. And so now we'll get him into the cycle of being on a five-year cycle. Other than that, it's just the usual, my comments and so forth, all on my list.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Gus Edwards on our administrators report.
Good evening, board. First item on the agenda is requesting a work session for fire public skating. And maybe we can talk a little bit about that after the end of our meeting tonight. Techsweg, it's a third-party platform. It's a communication platform that opens up lines of communication with local government agencies and citizens. It works twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year. Or it either connects you with the websites and other communication methods through texting. And using the regular message app on any smartphone, the smart texting technology allows the citizens to ask questions and get immediate responses and find links to the information on the agency's website. Or addresses problems or for any issues and uploads to phones. Put a description of it in your packet, set to a couple tutorials with the company on it. I don't think it has any, any real merit for us for the price that they quoted us on it. I hope it's not super. I mean, I think it is, having to eat. They would work with us for a couple of months and set up all the pre-programmed. You'd use like two words, like if you wanted reading attendance or whatever, and then it would text you the link right to that, it would take you to it. And, you know, so you could link a whole lot of stuff to it, but it's an opt-in and an opt-out type of message. So it's not going to do us any good, like we got to notify everybody in Sandy Run that we're going to be working on the road today because only the people that are.
Would fly.
Yeah, that would opt in to receive our texts, would receive it. If we sent out a bunch of texts, then it was probably going to aggravate people if we sent too much. So I just don't think it's a platform for us. And then the cost, like I say, I think was not worth it this way.
Kind of agree, we're a small enough community, we all know what's going on anyway, pretty much. We hear it.
But there's companies, you know, they, they called me in today and I said, I got to present to the board. And I said, you know, can we call back tomorrow? And I said, I kind of linked the.
I know.
It, it, it's very cool, but shiny objects who does that, I mean, yeah.
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 I would much rather have something, you know, like the school uses or whatever, where somebody wants to be notified when something's going on. And, you know, we send out the message.
Yeah.
Or they get used to using our Facebook or our website. And I hated spending money and spent for sending out two hundred and fifty letters, but we don't do it that often.
Yeah.
You know, I see the, kind of the inbound thing is, is pretty cool in that people could, you know, text road issues or whatever else. But then, you know, what's going to happen is sixty-five percent of them or better are going to be about roads that don't even belong to us. And then the other thirty-five percent is going to be you know, just goofy stuff or stuff that just has nothing to do with us whatsoever, so.
Right, right.
Then it becomes more of a headache than what it's.
Then, right.
And who's going to maintain it, who's going to, yeah, no.
So good, thank you for comparing with me.
Yes.
But I at least honored presenting it to you, so. Independence Day celebration, again, that's going to be Saturday, July first, parade begins at noon. Concert by Sentinel Park at seven in the evening and fireworks at ten. Chamber Commerce has moved to their old office, which is now a new office at one seventy-four South Main Street. So after twenty years, they moved back to where they were. And then Safety Council, we wrapped up our last program on fire extinguishers and fire safety last Friday. And it's going to be moved to the second Friday of each month, starting in July. And next year, we'll book a three percent premium rebate instead of two percent. And that's really all I have.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, and speaking of text by, text by self, what, what's site status?
Yeah, so, so things are actually moving again, which is good, but I was actually just looking at my calendar to say probably the second meeting in July, and I know I keep pushing things out, but life's been a little insane. So yeah, I will keep you guys updated.
What do you think in the second meeting in July, you might have something? Yep. All right. When are we, like, under a time crunch where something is running, like our current is running out? I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, they said they weren't going to support it and it could possibly, it could go down, but I've not had any problems with it, so I don't think there's going to be any issues.
Anytime you want to phase down a service like that, they, they basically tell everybody, we're shutting down, and then it takes two years for them to do a really big platform and what is it?
I did this today when I posted something that I, I had deleted quite a bit of stuff. They wouldn't let me put anything new on it, so I'm like, I'm maximum on it, so.
Yeah, yeah, we won't run into that issue with this new system, it's all. I mean, it's, it's all ours and it's all, yeah.
Forever, never?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, this wasn't a big deal, I mean, I just went back in and cleaned out stuff that was more than a year old. It was on the house, but, so.
All right, we look forward to it. Any other old business? I don't think so. New business, questions or concerns in the bills we signed?
I haven't.
So, since I wasn't here last time, did we pay the fire, fire truck?
Yes, we did, the two, the two invoices, yes, we did.
That was last time, okay. All right. All right, moving on to legislation. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-two. Prove the acceptance of hiring of Samuel J. Gracy?
Gracy.
Gracy? To the Wayne Township Fire Department as a firefighter two slash E M T B.
He is on Route seventy-three over by Hill Springs, Steeple Chase, that's something we know of there. He just left his job at Double Day Grill, he likes to cook. He's going in as a job as a D R tech right now. He did a clinical time with City Dayton. While he was there, he did see some overdoses and suicides and a lot of E M S stuff. He did clinical time at Grandview, so he got to see a lot of stuff there. Really no family in fire and E M S, most of his family was in medical of some type. His grandfather's the one that pushed him to get into the fire and E M S. He has applications in Clear Creek and Xenia Fires, full-time firefighter. Well, he, he just needs to get some experience, he has absolutely no experience. He's a hands-on person and he likes to golf when he's not working, so. So he's looking for runtime and see how the fire service works. He also asked, he had major concern to be hired on one of the departments and he's still run here to get more experience, so.
Sure.
We'll allow it.
Yeah, we'll allow that. Might have to put a little tea out back or something for him. All right, I'll make a res, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-two.
And I will second.
Okay, I have a motion of Ms. Colvin, second of Mr. Jacobs to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-two. Call roll there on, Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And Mr. Patrick?
Yay.
This resolution is here, adopted here by adopt this twentieth of June, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-three is entering into a continuing education contract with Samuel Gracy. Same one we just talked about, for a current ring program as a firefighter two E M T with Wayne Township Fire Department. This was Sinclair, right?
Yeah, he showed an interest in wanting to become a medic, and I think that he's willing to sign a con, the contract with that. And we explained to him that the contract starts after his certification, so it takes him fifteen months to get a certification, basically. So you've got to sign a three-year contract after that, you know, to be here three years after that or pay it back, so. You know, that paramedic class is now eight to ten thousand dollars. And the con, you know, that's right now, we, we call for three years and volunteer no less than twelve hours a week or forty-eight hours a month.
Okay. And Gus, would this be part of our, because I thought we approved some money in ARPA funds to be, to pay for some firefighter?
As long as we get it paid out.
Yeah.
For twenty, in the twenty-four. It depends when he would roll into it.
He is, he's in the process of now, he told me the other day that he is in the process of getting re-rolled in that fall medic class. So.
Those payments for that all come at the beginning, or do they?
They come each semester. So I think the Sinclair runs now five semesters, so you get paid every time they enter into one, getting of it, so.
So if you have to get the invoice, we could then do a resolution, okay.
Okay, okay, so all this paid out to twenty-five, so we could actually enter in all of it into.
Okay.
Into one.
Yeah.
Resolution, okay.
Okay. All right, I agree with that, so. I have a, anybody want to make a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
All right, I'll second.
Sorry about the type of.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a motion of Mr. Jacobs, second of Ms. Colvin to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-three. Call roll there on, Mr. Patrick?
Yay.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yay.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
This resolution is served by adopt this twentieth of June, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-four is reappointing Steve Doris to our Wayne Township Board of Zoning Appeals for a five-year term. Like you said before, he was only, he was only a short time period, just to fill out the remainder, and now he's going to start the five years. He's been showing up to the meetings, all right? Okay, participate, good.
That's amazing, yeah.
Yeah, that's amazing.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-four. Second.
Look, they have a motion of Mr. Jacobs, second of Mr. Patrick to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-four. Call roll there on, Mr. Jacobs?
Yay.
Mr. Patrick?
Yay.
And Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
This resolution is served by adopt this twentieth day of June, twenty twenty-three.
Ms. Chairman, may I make her request?
Yes, sir.
You know, with, with any of these appointments, you know, recognizing we get the reports ahead of time, is it possible that before we have something in resolution form, that we could have a work session or discussion about these things?
Um, on the Board of Zoning Appeals and the, and the other board?
Yeah, 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 zoning commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, I mean, I, you know, to me, it's, it's a little strange that as an elected official, I, I get the resolution on the agenda, that's the first time I hear about it or see it. I would just prefer that we have some discussion about these types of things in the future before it's.
I agree.
Codified.
Yeah, yeah.
So you'd like to have like a work session like the, the one before it gets put onto the.
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, just, just some communication that we could go through and say, this is, this, I mean, a five-year term has implications beyond you and me, I mean, anybody, so, so it's just one of those things where I prefer that we have a little more foresight into those things, a little more discussion, and it not just be.
Yeah, and I think too, on the, I mean, on both those boards, there's no reason we can't come as trustees, come to the meetings and see how they're performing also, you know, as to depending on.
Well, I like what Stacy did too, she was able to rotate it in a certain cycle, so you can see when they're coming up.
Yeah, yeah, good.
I think the work session is good, I think you can also look at the yearly evaluations too.
Correct.
When we look at the zoning code as it comes into play, what, what works for zoning code, what doesn't? How does the member, are there attendances and stuff like that too? So I think they're good ideas.
I would just like to say too, little, that it's important to realize too, with having the alternates, there's a reason we have alternates, right, because sometimes the people will miss. So it's worked out really well to have an alternate that has come every time, even though you do have board members that sometimes have, you know, a conference or something that they have to miss, so.
So Mike Wages has been coming every time too?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, but we do have, you know, here and there, somebody missing, so I just want to say, you know, that is, you know, a reason for having alternates to allow some of that life to happen a little bit, so it's worked out well.
That's good, all right. All right, we will do that in the future. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-five, accepting the resignation of Daria Royk from the Wayne Township Fire Department, she's moved to Arizona.
Yes.
So that is a little far to be.
Job, I'm going to go south, go out there, she had some other personal issues that need to put it out in the air, but.
All right, and she's, you, of the three, you were able to communicate with her?
Uh-huh.
You were able to communicate with her?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three forty-five?
I will second. Okay, I have a motion of Mr. Patrick, second of Mr. Jacobs to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-five. Call roll there on, Mr. Patrick?
Yay.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobs?
Yay.
This resolution is served by adopt this twentieth day of June, twenty twenty-three.
All right, resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-six is accepting the termination of Marcus Rolle from the Wayne Township Fire Department. So has there been any communication with him?
No, he was, he was going to send me a letter.
Okay.
A couple of months ago, it never has, so I put him in the next one off, you know, hoping to get the letter before I present it to you. And as of, even today, he has not sent me that letter.
So it's really, this is just cleaning up basically our roles, okay. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-six.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion of Ms. Colvin, second of Mr. Jacobs to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-six. Call roll there on, Mr. Jacobs?
Yay.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yay.
This resolution is served by adopt this twentieth day of June, twenty twenty-three.
And resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-seven is accepting the termination of Clifton Lamb from the Wayne Township Fire Department.
Same thing with him, he, he said he had time, they, they don't have time, his, you know, his business is, is good, which is great. He's in a, a side hobby and he's put a lot of time in that. And now it's got to the point that, you know, he said, I need your letter, and he hasn't yet. And plus, he don't have enough continued education to recertify.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. I'll make a motion again to accept the resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-seven.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion of Ms. Colvin, second of Mr. Jacobs to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three forty-seven. Call roll there on, Mr. Col, Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yay.
And Mr. Patrick?
Abstain.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I will, let's see, if we can get through a few more things before the seven thirty budget hearing?
No, it's not tonight.
Oh.
July fifth?
It's July fifth, it's not July fifth yet, okay. Do that later.
Shock me, they're all saying.
Shoot, after a while.
I'm not ready, I'm not ready.
I have one other thing for new business that you.
Okay.
Or other, whatever.
Yes.
Last meeting you passed a resolution for Sarah Onske. Onske is how you say her name, so. But she did complete her physical journey with blown-up tons.
Good.
And here it is, the contract and everything for her.
Great.
I want to get that signed before that, and tie it loose ends. And the day that we approved her, the next day, she come in and did her orientation and stuff, and she had five or six runs that day.
Oh, wow.
And she's picked up like eight shifts.
Oh, yeah.
This month already.
Awesome.
All right, she's a go-getter.
Yeah, she is a really, like I said, and we talked about her last meeting, she is really upbeat and.
Does she have friends or family?
They're interested.
But she has jumped on real big friends with Emily Bassett. So, there's two girls about the same age, so.
Good, good camaraderie.
Yep, they, yesterday, matter of fact, Sarah was on yesterday, Emily come here because she had nothing to do, and they went over her orientation stuff over the vehicles. So they, they cooked lunch together and had chicken fried rice on the blackstone outside.
Nice.
Went through the compartments on the squad, and she's ready for her day three already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, so no budget hearing, then?
Hold on, yes, sir.
Correspondence, do you have any correspondence, besides you winning your test?
I guess, yeah. Do you have?
Daryl, any correspondence?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I know one piece of correspondence, it's from Inbridge, and it's concerning, I find it's taking information, same you did.
Yeah. There's a little.
If you get one of these, plus those, I think it's a.
There's a magnet in here too.
Yes.
It's a very magnet, okay.
I have another one too, which is two of mine, yeah.
Anything, anything you received?
Just a couple of letters from Energy Harbor about our new update rates for our electric, which we already know.
Yeah, that's good.
Also, I have, the Village of Williamsville will be passing a resolution tonight, authorizing the village manager entering into a multi-jurisdictional agreement with Wayne Township related to the Corwin Avenue retaining project and declaring interemergency. So they're following through with the discussion I had with everyone on that, so.
Thank you, that's great, yeah. Good to see the collaboration.
Yes.
So just to tell Diane that I saw, we saw alter fiber coming through our area now, after spec.
Oh my God, I don't want to hear this.
I, well, they're, they're more around, so at least there might be some chance. At least you guys are on their side.
I have heard they bought out Ridgeware.
That's what I heard too, yes, so. But the, the guy that, that went down through there was talking about, he was helping engineer, but they're looking at pole attachments instead of just going underground.
Awesome.
So they were looking at all the D P L, like they do poles and stuff, I could see which routes that they're going to go to do it.
Interesting.
Very interesting, yes.
All right, hopefully they make it.
That's what needs.
I hope they do too.
Okay, elected officials' comments.
I think it was my comments.
That was your comment?
Mm-hmm.
The thing, I guess I want to say is remind everybody that, I know it's a little ways away, but August eighth, we have a special election in Ohio. Everybody aware of that? There's a, um, about the, I think it's, so it'd be a little tougher to change the constitution in Ohio. So hopefully everybody does their research and votes on that, that'd be good. All right, a work session. We want to talk about our fire department for the fall, right?
Do you pick a date, are you wanting to?
Huh?
Are you wanting to pick a date or talk about it tonight?
Yeah, we got time to discuss, no, we, we got two more resolutions that we have to pass, where we get it on, in by, I think it's August seventh or eighth or ninth, I can't remember, it's kind of late, ninety days ahead of the election. Except we did get the millage certification and we are thirty, three hundred forty-six million, eight hundred and eighty thousand. It's a couple of things that, yeah, pretty much everything's standard, I think it was last year. Couple of things I'd like to point out, one is that we have hired a person full-time to fill in shifts, and this individual is applying at other departments, so, you know. How long will we take that individual, I don't know. Again, it's probably because we are lower paid than other departments that are hiring. It's also probably not. It's also probably not the most desirable shift. So that's, yeah, I think we're also probably have some, uh, times where we're probably having trouble getting coverage. I know Chief wants to elaborate any on that, but, uh, yeah, I just feel that we are, unless we start getting an abundance of additional members coming on, then, um, you know. We're going, you know, we may start to struggle and I I guess I just hate to, hate to, hate to wait. I'd like to see the board try to run levy again. There's two things I'd like to see done differently, uh, one, I think that if we're going to commit to bringing on a few more pay kind of personnel, that we do a continuing levy rather than a, a five-year levy. Only due to the fact that if you're going to bring on some people, then you want to guarantee that those people are going to have jobs and stay. And, uh, you know, maybe we could change the language where that millage is only for, uh, pay, you know, payroll. Uh, the other thing that I think with this new evaluation and everything, I think we've dropped the millage down instead of asking for two mills additional. I think we could ask anywhere for maybe one point, I hate to get down to one point eight because we have a levy, it's already that number. But I think one point nine or one point nine-five would still give us as much as what we were looking at before, even though, you know, prices have gone up and the business has gone up. A lot of departments are bringing on.
Firefighter bees right now, basic prices starting around fifty-five to fifty-eight thousand. And we're about ten thousand shy of that. Right now I got four people that's applied next quarter, third week. And through the grapevine, three of them probably going to get hired. And those dates are looking to start September first, so.
Right, and, you know. I think we all know.
We can't keep up with the big dollar departments with that, with our funding, we just.
Correct. Correct. However, we asked the public and they said no. And to date, I can't really say that there's been any significant material changes that I know of that we can go back to the public and say, hey, we tried X, we tried Y, and we tried Z. Please, give us more money. I, I, I hate to say it, but I almost fear that the public has to experience difficulty in service, and I know that's not what you want, Chief, that's not what we want. But, but I don't think it will register the, the, the dire nature of the situation un- until it happens, I, I just. I, I don't, you know, to me, um, the economy is not better than it was last year. You know, private industry is not better this year than it was last year. I just, I don't feel that we are in a better position to go asking again this year. That's my opinion, I respect the opinion of anybody else, I mean, I, I, I just. And I think it's subject to change, I think convince me differently.
Has there been any movement at the state level with any of that stuff that came out of the fire department?
No, they put their preliminary VBU out, what, six months ago or so, and nothing else on it. I mean, they dropped certification level, recertification, you know, from fifty-four hours down to thirty-six hours. And they lowered a paramedic recertification from eighty, eighty-four hours down to seventy-five hours, but that's that's, that's not going to help retain people, I guess, it, it might help if you look at that.
Maybe the general public doesn't know how bad it is trying to get manpower. Maybe they need, we need to send something out to residents.
March, we had four shifts that we basically put the units out of service. April, we had, I think, four, and May, three or four, so about three or four units. Uh, this month, we haven't put anything out of service as far as for until we got approved.
So, so how about this, Chief, is it possible that on our social media, um, that, that you could post a calendar that shows red spots where we lack any coverage, yellow if we are.
There you go, yeah.
And then green if we're in good shape, and, and that way we regularly communicate that. Maybe it will inspire some people to go through and, and volunteer, maybe it will inspire some people to say, oh, oh wow, if I had a heart attack today, I'd have to wait for Clear Creek to come and get me.
And then when, when the units go out, they go to the closest agency.
Right.
And that's all GPS would do.
Right.
So, I mean, look at the mutual aid report, it can go to, you know, Spring Valley, Sugar Creek, uh, Washington Township and Clear Creek. As a matter of fact, I left them the other day on a skydiving accident, so. It pulls left them before it does Clear Creek because of where they're located now, so.
And I do, I mean, I see what Clear Creek puts out for, they, they do monthly reports that they put out on their social media, and it has a lot of tweet has a lot of information about what has happened and I know they're a lot bigger than we are, but.
They got full-time, two full-time ladies that does that too.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
And they got two administrative assistants that does all this stuff.
Okay. I was wondering how that works.
Yes, I mean, that's, yeah. They're paying someone sixty thousand a year to do that, two people, so. I'm not saying they can't be done, it's just, you know.
I know, I'm just wondering if we could, if we pick through what they would have, what they have put out and see if there's anything that we could kind of more simply do that would be effective.
I mean, for our monthly reports that we get, I, I mean, yeah, you slice those up a little bit or pare those down or just republish it, I mean, you know, it's the public's information.
Yeah, but when it's just numbered, I mean, it's, it's hard when it's just numbers. Like I even have a hard time looking at your reports, I mean, you say year after year, but it's like I had to sit there and figure out, like, is this better or worse and.
A hundred and sixty thousand dollar year-end, then I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah, people don't, they're, regardless of how much you put out there, they're not going to, it's not going to affect them. It's not going to, it's not going to jar, jar them until it actually hits them, you know? And I'll put the case in the scenario that I'm going to refer to right here at this office. When we had a fatal accident right outside here, and Stacy and I were out, and it seemed like forever for anything to get here. And who was the first on the scene, it was Clear Creek Deputy Chief, it was Clear Creek Squad. Uh, we did get our, our rescue there. Now, with that being said, it wasn't because we were out of service, we rolled it over. But I mean, essentially the same thing.
Yeah.
You know, we can't get more than, than one unit out most of the time, and those times that we can't get a unit out, then maybe there are people that are sitting there, you know, when is somebody going to get here? You know, and it does seem like, you know, like forever. I know, and I don't know which month it was, but there was one of those days that Chief here was talking about. You know, it, it's all coincidental, but, you know, timing is everything. We only had one person on, uh, on squad that morning, and it started, I think, about seven thirty in the morning. And between seven thirty and eleven thirty, we had four runs, about forty-five minutes apart, boom, 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 boom. We didn't make any of them, and the last one was a bad one. Or, I don't think, I don't, I don't know how it ended up, but it was the worst part, and we're just, you know. I got a headache call, I mean, they were, and so we had one person running, uh, from scene to scene to scene just to stabilize the scene until we got another, you know, another crew here from another department. And, you know, but then the, the public said, realize too, that we may go three days and not have hardly anything. But, uh, and we, and we can't cover, you know, we realize we can't cover everything. But I think it's, it speaks volumes when we, if we have something happen, I the reason I'm promoting this is because I don't want to be the one that's got to sit here and say, you know, we didn't have anybody even scheduled because we couldn't get anybody to, to run, and so, you know. And the public doesn't know about it, but nothing else, if we have to publish the fact that we do have some brownouts, then I guess let's publish it. I mean, that's something that we didn't, we've never done before, publish that fact. And again, it's not that we have that many, but it's, you, you just don't know when you're going to have it, when the next one will be. And, you know. I don't, it's, uh, I know the economy is not the greatest and.
How, how far in advance do you know that you're not going to have anybody on those shifts? Is it the day before, like, or is it the weeks before?
I page up to the, out to the very last minute, I mean, I start paging and I call and try to switch people around and, I mean. Like right now, I'm working on Saturday nights and Saturday, Sunday day, Sunday night, this week. And Sunday night, a pro- a day will probably be covered because I'll end up pulling the battalion off and put them on there. So what happens, uh, Sunday night right now, it's just one person.
So is that something you think you could do? I mean, update, is it, is it going to be a pain because all of a sudden you have somebody and you now have to go change your social media post or something, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I mean.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Even historically, if we just have a calendar, you know, with, with monthly report, again, if you get your crayons out and just coloring the days that, that would probably be the best.
Are you thinking post tense or pre?
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, I'd say, I'd say.
Oh, post, okay.
I think it's not, but you, you want to wait till after, in fact, you don't want to say something that says, okay, I got to bring up a couple of things happening.
Hey, man.
Well, they're going to come back at you too, it's like, well, you should staff it, why aren't you staffing it? Why can't you get somebody staffing, why can't you force somebody into that?
Right, right.
It's no different than the same thing with, with the line guys and stuff like that, I mean, there's guys that take their days off, there's guys that come in. You know, you got a different mentality now, and you got different things that are happening. Um, and nothing wrong, they all deserve their time off and stuff like that, but you try to work a schedule and try to figure it out. Well, you know, they get ways that they can, even, they got emergencies too, so. But I would do it on the post side of it and see what we have on that thing as being, how many shifts that we can't fill or how many shifts that are coming up empty during the month. You can take a stat to that as you go through and say, okay, is this getting better, getting worse? Um, you know, your retention, how long do we keep these new, new, new people coming in? I mean, do they stay for a little while, do they stay a year and then leave, do they do two years?
Most, most people stay three to six years.
Okay.
Three to six years.
So you're looking at a cycle of people coming through, so that's a whole cycle of people, you're losing that experience level. The knowledge of, of knowledge as a township of the roads, the houses, the people, the customers that they, that they deal with. You know, you have a, a crew that goes out there and deals with, say, a customer multiple times, and you know, what do, you know, it saves time, right? It's all about time.
You only, you're talking about forcing, there's only one person that we can force.
That's what I'm saying, I mean.
And, you know, and right now, I don't think he's going to be here because I think he's one that's leaving, so.
I think it's tough, right, yeah.
Yeah. For our part-time hours, in two thousand nineteen, we had four thousand twenty-eight hours.
And that's why we want to get the extra people in.
Twenty twenty, we had five thousand eight hundred forty part-time hours, twenty-one, we had thirty-five hundred sixty-five part-time hours. Last year, we had sixty-two hundred seventy-five part-time hours, and through May eleventh, we've had almost two thousand part-time hours. What we do, we don't, we can't get a shift, we throw out to everybody and say, hey, instead of being a volunteer, getting a five-dollar standby, come in the station and get it from sixteen to eighteen dollars an hour.
Or you do that, you do all of that.
Yeah.
I always, I always wondered.
Regardless of what, that they had before or five, you know, supposed to have four shifts a month before you're eligible for part-time. But to me, I've been trying to fill the squad because of that.
Yeah, makes sense, I mean, I understand, got to entice him somehow.
And you, you probably see that, Daryl, in the, the varieties of people.
So here's, here's the only question I would have too, that I, I go back to Miami Township just did this past year, um, election cycle. And what they did is they, we have two levies going on right now. Is there any way that we can combine the two levies down into one, still have the same type of verbiage, right? But do, is that a possibility, is it a possibility maybe get rid of one of them to do something a little bit different with the other? I mean, I know we talked about different variations, but somehow we got to increase the money, but then make it more appealing to the, to the voters as well. I mean, it's just, I'm just.
So here's, here's where the rubber is meeting right now, okay? So how far are you willing to roll the dice? Okay, so, so we're on a time crunch in order to be able to get this on the ballot to potentially get it passed by the electorate. If we just go on the camp, the advertising campaign of the, you know, or whatever, and we get past the deadline date.
One month advertise, basically.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, okay, so now we've got to wait another year.
Yeah.
Before we can get it on the ballot. So perfectly valid, perfectly valid opinions all the way around. My personal opinion for whatever it's worth. Go with the camp, go with the advertising campaign on your post, uh, you know, your post-monthly availabilities or brownouts or however you want to advertise it, but still put it on the ballot. And I think, uh, Mr. Edwards, uh, you know, looking at the numbers, uh, you know, you know, run it out, you know, you try for two, run it for one nine.
I'm thinking.
And, but, but don't let the, don't let it get, don't let the time get passed, and then you've got to wait another another election cycle.
Spring, till springtime.
And, well, and then, well, we have, and that's saying that there is something on, you know, in May.
It's a primary next year, so.
Oh, okay, there's a primary, so, but we don't. All right, so we're safe there, but.
At the, at the beginning of this meeting, I sat over here and I listened to two trustees talk about how busy they was with their kids. Andy talking about he's got, don't know what's going to happen with, you know, the classes or the.
Oh, yeah.
Dr- the sports events. Mr. Patrick said here and said, you know, I had to leave the event early to get here. Well, that's the same thing our community's doing, the ones that we have volunteer.
Oh, yeah.
They don't have time, they do not have time. I mean, your, parents are being pulled both directions.
Oh, yeah.
From everybody, so I mean, it's, you know, that's just.
When you're giving your time.
Yeah, it's, it's basic.
And you, and you're going to be faced with a choice between going to watch your children play whatever or do whatever and going to fire call. Well, it doesn't take a rocket science to figure out what's going to happen in today's society. Twenty-five years ago, that's different.
And two thousand.
Because I was there twenty-five years ago.
In two thousand thirteen, we had nineteen thousand eight hundred sixty-nine volunteer hours. Last year, we had two, twelve thousand two hundred, so we're down eight thousand hours in volunteer. I mean, and I got the chart here, it just keeps going down, you know, from thirteen to fourteen to eighteen, four twenty-seven, fifteen to eighteen, six twenty-six.
It's probably a good chart to, to grab.
Yeah.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, that's, you know, just the twelve month comparison, you know, from these years, it's. But I, you know, I, I think putting it out more on social media or whatever, and everybody, look with some charts and.
I did ask somebody on Clear Creek how they got theirs passed, you know, whenever they did to, to be full-time with people, he says, we, um, they did that. They, they basically put things on social media and said how bad it was, and, you know, basically, you know, that's the only way to get people's attention, it's bad.
That's it.
So, yeah.
Facts are facts and the truth is the truth, you know, they're not trying to put anything over on anyone.
But also, you've got sixty guys that's in a union that helps. I mean, you know, we're looking at one or two people here maybe having to put this together, it's, you know. I'm not, I'm not a Facebook designer in no way, I don't make very many posts, I don't, you know. I just, you know, I'm not a.
There's not a lot of, there's a lot of people that don't do social media, or you think they're, or I think. I mean, they may do it to a certain extent, but they may not do Facebook.
But some of us have, you have to have volunteers, like you said, it's, it's supporting staff, whether it be family members or it is somebody in the community that takes it up as a challenge too, I mean, there's, you know, some communities, I see people come up as a challenge, like, like, you know, one guy came out and said, I want to do the roads, I want the roads better, so I'm coming to the meetings and I'm starting up like community action groups and stuff like that, you know, all those little things help. But it's a matter of just, but it takes time, we said volunteer time, how do we get that around to do something like that? How can somebody take that next step into it, you know? That's the hard part about it, that's, yeah, like you say, because it's, it's a community effort even getting something like this passed.
You know, in this room, there's four of us right now that volunteer, I mean, you know, Gus did, Delce's brother did, uh, Scott, myself, I mean, you know, this. And I'm sure Delce changes over the years from, you know, just sitting back listening, you know, when he was here, you know, you you was allowed to run five, six, seven, eight, run eight shifts a month, now you have to beg for people to do four. When Gus was here, you know, he, you might run ten a month, I mean, you know. When Gus was here, you know, he, you might run ten a month, I mean, you know. Or more.
You know, you're still, we were asked to run four, but like you said, back then, you were, people just seemed to be more dedicated. If you were out with your wife or girlfriend even, and you got a fire run, I mean, you, you loved it. I remember going on a fire when I had white pants and a white shirt on and, you know, they'd come back, you know, we were going out somewhere and, you know. But that didn't come first, you know, your commitment to the community came first.
And it wasn't, it wasn't in order to get coverage. I mean, I was on the road department and in the winter time, you know, you never know when it's gonna snow, I mean, you know, but if I, I just put out a page, you know, hey, I gotta go cross snow, can somebody cover me? And within minutes.
Yeah, you gotta have.
I, somebody would cover me, yeah.
Okay, let me, let me back up on my story one more time, cause like, hey, this is, this is something I, I can really, I can really share because, you know, we found it, Stacy found it, you know, with this accident that we had outside the office here. Uh, we did get a rescue truck here and guessing it was on the rescue truck. Two of our road department employees are also on the fire department. We had five OSP vehicles out here. We had one county sheriff vehicle out here and we had one Village of Waynesville officer out here. And guessing it was directing traffic out here at the intersection, our other two road department employees, Scott and Kurt. So, you know, we had all our resources at the scene, but, you know, they weren't, they weren't enough. You know, and that's, I don't wanna say that was a minor accident, that's just a two-vehicle accident.
Well, it's a day's crash. It was, uh, two road department guys left thirty minutes early to get there. I mean, they had to go back to work and get their lunchboxes in their cars, so they, they came to run in a clear creek minute. Because ours was out on another run at Southview Hospital, so.
So it's, uh, you know.
I, I think that, uh, to me, the problem with the last levy a little bit was that it was worded in a sense that it didn't, we had to try to explain to people that it was for, um, to hire people as full-time employees.
Well, that, we, we were running a renewal plus bit as well, which, which really made it easy for people. If I went to act, say, well, I'm, I'm supportive, I'm voting for the renewal, it's not voting for the extra.
But we also had an email that I don't think we got one email on, on a, on, out of the flyer and all that, that in my opinion, I thought, well, if no one asked the question, it oughta be easy. You know, you'd think somebody would at least send an email saying, hey, explain this, or you're crazy, or you're not, you're not having my support, or you got my support, something. But, I mean, that went out in the folder, or in a, a magazine and it was on a couple of Facebook posts.
You have to save those magazines, get out.
So with that, I, I sort of took it, you know, no news is good news, but.
Let's say only that reminds me of.
If you run it alone as a separate, yeah, as its own merits, then, and they say no, then you, you can't, you definitely can't argue with it. I, I don't know when the right time is to run it, uh, I just, I'm just going out there that I feel comfortable being said no to by the voters again as opposed to not having the people and have to face the consequences when somebody gets upset because.
I'd like to see, uh, my opinion is I, I would like to see it go on this next, and I kind of agree with the dropping it down slightly and making it wording so that it actually is for full-time employees, that it's not some general fire department type of a levy. If we can word it appropriately, so that it's very specific to what it's for. And I, I do agree with the continuing levy, so we don't have to come back to this constantly. That's my opinion. And, and do the.
I would like to do some public, I don't wanna call it a hearing, but a public meeting on it.
Like public awareness.
Yeah, and see how many people show up. I mean, uh, uh, we could do it at the firehouse. I mean, that would hold fifty or sixty, but I don't know if that's a lot that would show up. Have no idea. I mean, I know Meet the Candace at school. None of those, what I felt was well-attended for the community for as many issues and different stuff was going on. I mean, they might've had a hundred and fifty people there at Meet the Candace.
But, you know, so, so there's something called the Pareto Principle, uh, also called the eighty-twenty rule. And it basically states that eighty percent of your results come from twenty percent of your effort. You know, it applies in all industries, all different situations. You know, if you go to a church, you're gonna have twenty percent of the volunteers that are going through and doing eighty percent of the work. In your situation, it's gonna be the same way. I, I mean, it, it's, you know, even in my world, in e-commerce, I'm, I'm gonna have twenty percent of my customers that produce eighty percent of my revenue. So, so it's, it's, you know, a really interesting thing. I don't know, I, you know, I I, I think we have to go through and identify where we're gonna get the biggest thing for our buck. I, I just, I just struggle with this because it's, it's, it's one of those things that, again, what has changed? You know, do people have more money this year? You know, if, if people have, you know, a, a limited budget, if they have a fixed income, I, I mean, what's gotten better? And, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not anti-levy. I, I want the levy. I want the money. I want us to be able to provide the service that, that, that folks expect. I'm, I'm just asking truly, what has changed?
I, I think that what Gus just said about they think they voted yes on one and now on the other, they, they feel like they did their duty.
Yeah.
So, with both of them on there at one time.
That's true too, a lot of people just got the opinion, already paid too much tax.
Right.
That's exactly.
Tax today. Newer's tax bill. I don't say that. Oh, I don't want to pay more tax. That's what I'm saying.
I have, it must be the holes.
That's, well, that's what I tried to emphasize to people, that the majority is going to.
Yeah, it's like ninety percent or something goes to schools.
And, and, and what was, you know, with that Pareto Principle thing is that, you know, the people that attended those, those things, those are people that are most passionate. Those are the twenty percent of people that are going to go talk to their friends and talk to their neighbors that, you know, when, when the time comes along for an election, somebody gives them a call and says, hey, you know, who, who am I going for this year? Because there's, there's a large swath of people that are just simply uninformed and they trust the people that attend those types of things. So I think there's, there's benefit, there's value in doing some grassroots things, but we better schedule it. We better do it. You know, because we talked about it and talked about it and talked about it and talked about it to where it's like, let's, let's get off the pot or let's do it. That's put very nicely.
No, I, I, you know, I.
That's just like this work session. We've talked about it for a month and a half, two months.
I'll go for another tangent, I guess, and that's, uh, talked a lot of residents that love this community, love moving out here and love ever since they've been out here. Not necessarily came here, but moved out here. And, you know, they say that, you know, of course, like I said, those look like their taxes, property taxes, but they say that they're still a whole lot cheaper where they were before. I had some people down here at the Sople Roots dinner, whoever I was talking to, and, uh, just thanked us, thanked me to death for leaving Wayne Township be small and be rural. And I said, well, you know, we're trying, but I said, it's, it's not easy. Everybody wants to be here, everybody wants to, you know, so what I got highlighted here, there are people, I'll let Phil see this, but that's. Our class two certification, uh, mileage, fourteen million, fourteen and a half million dollars worth of property value in commercial. We can reduce people's taxes if we get more commercial in here, but that's not what people are gonna want. If people don't want that, then they're gonna have to support for the services of, you know, they're requesting of you as a board and us as, me as administrator and chief as the, you know, they gotta support the services. If they can't come in and volunteer or whatever and act like a rural community and, and provide those services, then we're gonna have to pay somebody to provide them for us. Uh, and the way to do that is either scrub building industrial park, bringing somebody in, uh, or get more density in residential, or not provide the services, or put it on the ballot and see if they pay for the services.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm open to put it on the ballot. And, and especially if it's, it's an adjusted, you know, language is adjusted, the, the ask is adjusted, um, the format is adjusted, you know, and, and I think we need to change the way that we're doing things because kicking this thing down the road every five years and then going into full panic mode is just not, it's not good.
Correct.
You know.
Absolutely.
I.
Think shrink it down, put it on a continual.
Right.
And take another swing at it with the, with the addition of the education.
Correct. It ha, it has to be coupled.
Lit tree, lit tree.
Yes, yeah. I have agree with that. That's what it's gonna have to be. And, and, and I mean frankly, you know, there were enough people that saw on social media this, this accident and heard about this fatality out here. It may be necessary, important to tell people, hey, do you wanna hear how embarrassing this was? There's five state boys out here. Luckily, we got a road department that's.
Half over.
Wasn't outgoing that day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm embarrassed. I'm, I'm embarrassed.
This is like a really long wait.
Yeah, well, of course, it was.
It just, it just felt, as you do, it was that accident, obviously.
The men come from the Career Center.
Yeah, I.
And their battalion come out of twenty-one, which is downtown Springfield. I was leaving Miami Valley South because I was at physical therapy. There's one was on the way to Miami Valley South.
Yeah, it was.
And their engine was, when they had the squadron, the engine was coming back from a fatal fire in Turm Creek. They ended up with one squad member.
Yeah, that's right, that fire was that same day, yeah.
The issue is, is that if you want the coverage, it's no different than the power. We're dealing with it right now. You have to pay some money to have the coverage.
The problem right now is they got the coverage regardless of it's us or somebody else.
Well, it is not as fast, yeah. You have stuff happening in certain different areas and that run becomes longer. That minute or two minutes that, I guess that's the thing is, yes, you get to run, but you get it late.
Right, you get it late.
And it could be too late.
Well, that, that was, I, I said, the two, I said to two guys that are on the part, I told them, go, bug out right then. But then it still left me and Kurt back at the shop that we had to, I mean, we can't just leave with the shop.
Right.
While, and then, and then things running and whatnot. So, I mean, we tidied that up and then we came up to see wherever and however we could assist.
I handed Gus my release to go, be able to go to some scene calls that, and it's, and it's Stacy in the parking lot, or in the yard, you know. I said, here, this is the first thing. I got released to go to some scenes. Here's a paper, I mean, it's, you know, cause up till that day, I was not supposed to go to scenes, so.
And will at one point I'd be able to, um, for being continuing, it, will that mean it'll cover what we need to as well? I mean.
You know, last year, we planned that, uh, it would bring in six hundred, six hundred thousand and we said back then that six hundred thousand would be enough for six full-time people. Uh, so this would bring in probably just a little over six hundred thousand. So hopefully, we can still get six of it and along with some supplemental or other levies for the foreseeable future, five to ten years maybe, before we have to make an adjustment to it. An adjustment from there, maybe, who knows what, you know, maybe we just can't get by with the six, we have to add people.
Yeah, cause once again, we wouldn't even get the money till the following year anyway, so it's, we're, we're on a year lag.
If you, the language could be put on the ballot to where it's collected for tax year twenty twenty, which we would start receiving then in April twenty-four.
Oh, okay, okay.
And it kind of draw a comparison, I did some research, like Village of Waynesville with their police officers. Now granted, you know, Village of Waynesville is smaller in tax base because it's just community, it's just a village. Their seven mil levy generates, I'm speaking raw, raw numbers, rough numbers here, cause I don't have them right here in front of me. Do you remember I told you yesterday, there was three hundred and seven?
You said three hundred.
No, it's three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, now in comparison, what they're supplementing that right now until they get the replacement of seven mils is to, I think the latest officer that they brought in full-time, again, because they can't get any more part-time help because all part-time is, you know, gone full-time to somewhere else, is out of their general fund. And their general fund with their three-quarters of a percent income tax is generating them seven hundred thousand dollars. So, in essence, that's, their seven mil with the replacement is half of what, if we wanted that amount of money, we would have to run, how was I saying this? Fourteen, uh, what was it, what is this, seven, or three hundred fifty?
At seven mils, three hundred fifty thousand, we would, we would have to be somewhere up around ten, given population.
Yeah, I think what I was looking at is maybe everything they were spending, uh, yeah, what they say yesterday, for some reason, I just think about fourteen mil.
You just think fourteen because the renewal, I mean, the replacement levy that they've got on, according to the fourth elections, is supposed to take in like five hundred and forty-eight thousand, if I remember right. I just saw it on the, the data, so I was looking to see what was on the ballot. That's for the village.
So I guess if they were in our shoes and they wanted the money that we need, then they would be asking for like fourteen mils, where, where, you know, we can do it for you. Two, yeah.
Figure of population.
So, so let's, let's work to get this thing at least on the ground. Uh, I mean, I'm fine with, with going forward. I don't want to, because it's kinda like when my kid slapped, or when my, my mom would slap me and be like, no means no. You, you know, but, but at the same time, it's like, well, let's adjust our ask a little bit. Let's, let's go back with, with more education. I think we, I, I had a false sense of security last time. I, I just, I was shocked that, that it didn't pass, that both of them didn't pass. You know, so, so if we really do apply in the next three months, four months, five months, we hit it hard, I, I, I think we can pull it off, but, but we've really got to work it. And honestly, I mean, if, if it, if the voters reject it again, and not to say we haven't already, but, but we've gotta do some serious soul searching. Be, be, because where, where do we go from there? Because if, if we have this conversation and say, well, let's fire it up again for another spring, you know, assuming I'm here at that time, I'm gonna say, hell no.
Is there a way to also get people to understand that we as a community have an obligation to people that don't live here as well? So if I go, Dayton, and I have a heart attack or a car accident, I don't wanna wait ten minutes for somebody to come help me. You know, it's the same, we owe that to each other.
Yeah. Well, well, and, and, and to that point, I mean, it's a domino effect where, you know, if we don't do our part and we're, we're pulling from Clear Creek and then they have to pull from somebody else, and they have to pull from somebody else, like eventually, we're gonna run out of good.
The bullet, the bullet is gonna run out.
Yeah, yeah.
The rope is gonna be.
I'm familiar with this game, yes. So, okay.
All right.
Well, that's, uh, my last two cents is when you compare these two numbers here, I gotta pull back up here again. We're not doing our part because we got two hundred ninety-four million dollars worth of residential property value, and we only got fourteen thousand. We don't have a very good balance. So, I mean, we're, it's made us unique, it's made us very popular.
Great place to live.
I shared that comment when we was at the firehouse. We had a kitty bear.
But with forty-five square miles of area in Wayne Township, you know, is there not a place that we could put, you know, some place where we could get a little bit of commercial?
We got Ventleys coming in, the Posse Resort.
Well, that's, the Ventleys will help out because if you're an extended.
I'd be surprised how many of the percentage that's gonna jump that class.
Well, yeah.
Uh, will it jump it a lot, you think? It won't jump it a lot, you think?
I mean, what do you think?
Is this probably a three million dollar, you think, investor, nine million dollars? Two, three, four, five?
I believe it's two anymore, isn't it?
You can't go now, I think, I think it's five or six million dollars, let's fire house.
The biggest thing about that.
I was just getting ready to say that, how much do you think?
It was like forty-eight thousand, which we're eighty-four.
Utility, yeah, if you extend those utility, that's about a single phase goes down through seventy-three. There's no three phases out there until you get over to Township Line Road, so now you're bringing that three phase out.
Yeah.
And for whatever reason, if it connects down that way, to be able to get the tie, circuit tie, something like that. Um, you also, to be honest with you, I mean, looking at the future of everything, Honda plant's going in, and it's not that far away, it's not that far away being built in right now. I just drove seventy-one just last weekend, and it is, we, AES got the rights to be able to bring in transmission into there and stuff like that, so, once that facility's built, there will be two thousand people gonna be working in it.
You're talking about the battery plant?
Yes. Then it's gonna breed out to everywhere else, so as that builds. Yeah, as that builds, it's gonna continue to put pressure over here for us to, for our land and stuff like that, so you're gonna see, like I said, with the, with the lines everyone out there with transmission, and then we're gonna build the distribution system where we've already bought land for substations out there, and build that to anticipate the residential growth, the commercial growth to support that as well, and that's not, that's what, twenty-five minutes away? It's right there.
I can tell you something going in, that One Meeter Road and Seventy-One, that comes in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the lady pretty much told me it was none of my business right now, but she was asking for records requests, so.
And that's right there down by us, we're just opposite us, right?
It's in Washington Township.
Well, you gotta think, the next exit is, um, you go past the bridge, and that's your, that's your big hubs right there, so, boom, there's another one coming in, and then think about seventy-three and, and seventy-one, that's starting to get developed a little bit, and it's gonna get, could continue to grow too.
That's gonna explode in the next five years.
I think it is too, I think we gotta, we really gotta think about being planned and ready because.
Candace Miller, you know Candace Miller?
Yeah, I mean, I get these every, I get these every day, and there's, there's two or three of them a day, sometimes four a day, seven days a week. You know, here's one, uh.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, there's like thirty acres, uh, two hundred fifteen thousand square feet.
Fifteen megawatts?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, these are, uh, some of these are national, some of them are right here in Rhode Island, but, you know, we can't even respond to or say that we have anything, even, even the smallest, but, uh, I mean, there's, there's, there's a bunch of them, most of them, they want something, and they, they want it now, and as they're coming through, they're wanting to run, well, like right now, they're wanting, uh, they're wanting to be in the fourth quarter twenty-three, and then that full enrollment, uh, production by, you know, twelve to eighteen months after that.
But, but, if, if we wanna stop bandaging the situation, wanna solve this, then why don't we form some type of Economic Development Task Force? Set up some residents, set up some businesses, set somebody up for the chamber, you know, truly go through and set up some, a, a group to advise and inform and say, hey, what does commercial activity, what does industrial activity in Wayne Township look like? Now, we, we, we know the places we've carved out for it, but, you know, uh, what does a reasonable, acceptable vision for the future look like? And, and let's start to stake, taking the steps to get there, I mean, you know, we, we have these opportunities that, that come through and.
That's gonna be the key, because like I said, it's, it's supporting structures to that Honda plant that are gonna be, that will bleed out over to us. And that's what we know, and people are gonna sell their land, I mean, it's coming, right? I mean, it's just.
And, and, and truly, it just takes the, the minds to be set to that direction.
Well, the main property is supposed to be partial, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's supposed to be industrial, they're at Old Seventy-Three.
Industrial residential. As a village.
I know it is.
Give a piece of it, we can pick that five. A little bit, yeah.
But you would think the school would wanna participate in this too, because they are gaining kids from the Clear Creek subdivision.
And that one big one's funny as well. Well, you're correct, because that's, yeah, that's another, another issue, yeah, you're right.
They're doing a new school that's not big enough. That's what I heard, yeah, so, I would think they wanna participate in some review of that, I would think the village would want to. The chamber should be involved in it, I mean, and some residents.
You know, I, I think it's, what does it look like? I, I don't know, I don't have the answers.
I don't either.
You, you know, but I guess we have a lot of smart people in the township that probably could.
I think so, there's, you know, I mean, talking anything from downtown Main Street of Waynesville to all about, you know what I mean? I know Troy's going through the process right now, they, I know they moved the poles and wires out of the main, main drag, moved it offside, and then they cleaned up the, the, the area and made it more more available to shop and stuff, more accessible, those little things like that, but that's also a lot of money too. It's a big job.
There's grants, there's, there's, there's money that are out there, but, but, but again, you know, it's, where none of those things will ever manifest or ever materialize if there's not a group that sits down to say, this is what we want, this is the ideal, this is what we're aiming for, and this is what we're gonna build towards. Otherwise, it, it's never gonna happen.
Yeah, because you're looking at the chamber, you're looking at Merchants Association for Waynesville, talking about village manager, talking about everybody that's there. The problem is, I don't see everybody getting together at all at one time, you know, we just, it's always been parcels around. For whatever reasons, it, you know, whether somebody had fights in the past or didn't disappear. It's all those little things, I mean, it did happen, it's, it's, trying to get them all together in one group would be good at some point.
At least get a representative from each, or a task force together, or some type of, you, you know.
They don't wanna leave that four one because they got this industrial park.
Well, they can, yeah, I mean, I mean, look at this, I mean, that, that's, that's.
Industrial area, commercial, whatever you want.
Hundred percent. So, it, it's there, but, but I think, you know.
You also have the parks, you know, we can think about the parks and recreation as well, I mean, and if you have the bike path. There's a whole variety of, Scott's like me.
Scott told me he wanted to, to put in a pool, a community pool.
I was gonna use a splash pad myself, but.
My lifeguard days are long gone.
All right, so, let's end the work session.
I will draft something up and, uh, the board for next meeting, uh, and, again, until, you know, we got two more resolutions, I think, before you actually physically put something on the ballot, so.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
We don't have, yeah, I won't be mad if they, they say no. And if you don't feel like you can support, I mean, it's.
No, I, I, you know, I, I would say that as a board, we need to be unified, because the mo, the moment that the public smells the slightest bit of divide, the slightest bit of, you know, confusion, they're gonna say, well, Josh doesn't even think they should do that. Josh doesn't even think they need that money, you know, and, and that, that's, I want a united front, you know, I, I, I want us to agree, I want us to go forward and, and, but, but I also want us to be cognizant of what the future looks like if they say no again, because that is damn realistic.
All right, any executive session? No. I make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty P.M.
Second.
All in favor?